All right, good evening. This is a public meeting of the Board of Education, Clark Public Schools. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given according to P L one nine seven five, Chapter two thirty-one, and a special notice was made in accordance with Section thirteen of the Act.
Get a motion to go into public. Ben Svinga and Mrs. Harrison. One favor. Good. Price for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands on mission, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll do a roll call.
Ms. Akalonis.
Here.
Mr. Ben Svinga.
Here.
Mr. Bohm.
Here.
Mr. Breedy. Ms. Guerrero. Ms. Harrison.
Here.
Ms. Hickman.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mrs. Smarle.
Here.
And Mrs. Duncan-Sloop.
Here.
Having A Board members, we are recording.
Thank you. At this time, we'll hand over to Mr. Grande.
Good evening. Tonight's always one of our most exciting nights of the school year because we're able to showcase a number of our students and staff members across the district for the great work that they do. We're going to begin with our Governor's Educators of the Year. Each fall, the New Jersey Department of Education releases a template for each school in the state to solicit nominees, two for each building, one being a traditional classroom teacher and the other being what they call an educational support professional, someone who has an important impact on children but outside of a traditional classroom role. Each principal then convenes a committee of various stakeholders across their schools to evaluate these applications. And the state gives us very strict guidelines that only the information in the application is to be considered, no external knowledge is to be considered, so that the process is fair and consistent. And that brings us to who we have tonight, our nominees and recipients for each school. And I'd like to begin with Mrs. Olivera, ALJ principal, for her two nominees.
It is my honor to introduce to you this evening our Arthur L. Johnson Educator of the Year, Mrs. Joy Donaldson. As a member of our English department for over twenty years, Mrs. Donaldson has taught all levels and grades, most recently initiating our AP Capstone program. She teaches both AP Research and AP Seminar, which are two of our most rigorous courses at ALJ. Any student who has had her as a teacher leaves the class with an abundance of knowledge, feeling more confident with their thinking, reading, and writing skills. And although in an English classroom these skills are important, the most paramount skill that Mrs. Donaldson provides those in her classes is the ability to critically think. Joy uses literature as a vehicle to help guide students into adulthood, where they will actively use their critical thinking skills and communication skills. As a lifelong learner, Mrs. Donaldson empowers students by giving them a voice in their education. She frequently asks students for feedback, not only on the content she is teaching, but also on her strategies. They help her to identify her areas of strength and what she needs to improve upon. This constant reflection, this willingness to embrace the feedback of others, is what makes Mrs. Donaldson a great teacher. She will never stop learning, growing, and evolving. Mrs. Donaldson goes above and beyond for the high school. On a full-scale level, she is involved in our NJGPA Refresher Program. She meets with students to provide information and insight on this important New Jersey state exam. Additionally, she makes herself available to any student that would benefit from her expertise on the college entrance essay, and she assists them in working with them independently to structure, create, and edit student writing. She believes in instilling in students a lifelong love and respect for learning, which they clearly recognize, as she was also heralded as the ALJ National Honor Society Teacher of the Year this year. I have personally been fortunate to work with Mrs. Donaldson this year as she is completing her administrative internship on her path to obtaining her principal certification. She is hardworking, dedicated, and always thinking. The positive effect that she has had in our students and our school community makes Arthur L. Johnson a better place. Please join me in congratulating Mrs. Joy Donaldson. It is now my honor to introduce to you the Arthur L. Johnson Educational Services Professional of the Year, our media specialist, Mrs. Carla Wagner. Mrs. Wagner is one of the most in-demand staff members at ALJ. As the media specialist, she creates and presents educational information for students based on teachers' assignments. Every time she does a presentation, it is uniquely catered to the teacher and class. She then houses these presentations on the ALJ Media Center page so they're easily accessible to all. She is a clearinghouse for tech help, research help, and she also runs our school Instagram, which I am very thankful for. In addition, she is the Class of 2027 advisor and has very creative fundraising ideas. She also started the ALJ Book Club, and she has nearly ten new readers in that club this year. As we have seen growth in the AI industry, Carla is ahead of the game. She's looking for ways to work with the tide as opposed to trying to combat it. An expert at our subscribed databases, she can also find obscure information for such students as those that are enrolled in the AP Seminar and AP Research courses that I discussed earlier. She's happy to do research and support our students. Her attitude is contagious, and that positivity models for students all the positives that we can find in education and in knowledge. Carla is constantly working for ways to showcase our Media Center. Through her redesign, student challenges, advertising books that coordinate with our nation's holidays, the IMC is a revolving door. There's board meetings, flex blocks, classes, art shows, parent university club fair, students in classes simply just working. She moves the room around to meet everyone's needs and whoever is sharing her space that day. Regardless of need, the IMC is welcoming, bright, and cheerful, a true reflection of who Carla is. Students gravitate towards the IMC, seeing Mrs. Wagner as approachable and helpful, which is what we strive for in education. As a testing coordinator for our ALJ standardized assessments, the AP, the PSAT, the NJSLA, NJGPA, all of our exams run seamlessly, which alleviates much of the stress that testing can bring to both students and staff. As we cross the digital divide from paper to computer, she has prevented many problems with her amazing preparation. She has worked with the middle school population, as we now give the PSAT at Clark H. Kumpf as well. She has embraced, supported, and organized location changes for our AP students. In fact, Carla sits on the board for Clark Public Library as a trustee and the superintendent's designee. She has been an effective liaison in this position for over five years, and this partnership meant that when we decided to move AP tests to the library, it was seamless. In short, Carla works tirelessly, effectively, efficiently, and with a smile. Arthur L. Johnson is blessed to have her as our librarian. Congratulations to our Educational Services Professional of the Year, Mrs. Carla Wagner.
Thank you, Mrs. Olivera. And now I'd like to call forward Mr. Delmonico and Mrs. Clark for Clark H. Kumpf Middle
Thank you, Mr. Grande. Congratulations to all the recipients tonight. You're all well-deserving of these accolades tonight. The Educator of the Year for Kumpf Middle School is Ms. Lauren Fernandez. Ms. Fernandez teaches sixth grade math at Kumpf Middle School. She started at Kumpf in 2017. She has a BA and MA from Quinnipiac University in Mathematics. Lauren is such a pleasure to observe as a math teacher. Her lessons are creative and innovative as she incorporates real-world examples and practical uses for math that holds her students' interest, which is no easy feat with middle school students. As a new teacher, it was obvious the maturity Lauren had as a teacher and passion she has for math and middle school. Ms. Fernandez has endeared herself to the parents and students by always making herself available to help. She is willing to work on new initiatives in the school. When we rolled out our Arts Integration Program, Lauren was one of the first people to embrace the program. She became an advocate and helped her colleagues come up with ideas to incorporate arts into other lessons. She has done so well with this program, she has even presented on Arts Integration at state conferences. Lauren also serves as the co-sixth-grade team leader. In this role, she has been instrumental in building enthusiasm within our sixth grades by creating a battle of the homerooms. The kids love the competition, using academic, social, and athletic challenges to gain points for their teams. She also serves the advisor to the Builders Club as a counselor at our Camp Cougar program in the summer, which helps our students prepare for and adjust to middle school life. Lauren Fernandez is a dynamic and talented educator who is passionate about her work with students at the middle school level. She is a tremendous asset to Kumpf Middle School and is so deserving of the recognition of Educator of the Year. Congratulations, Lauren.
Michelle Burdo is an occupational therapist who works in all the schools in the district and is Kumpf Middle School Governor's Educational Services Professional of the Year recipient this year. This is Michelle's fifth year in the district. She works tirelessly with our struggling students to improve their physical, sensory, and cognitive issues. She helps them regain their independence by teaching them the skills to break the barriers that affect their emotional, social, and physical needs. It has been a pleasure working with Michelle, and I look forward to working with her for many years to come. On behalf of myself, Mr. Delmonico and the Kumpf Middle School, it's my honor to present this year's Governor's Educational Services Professional of the Year award to Michelle Burdo.
And now, Mrs. Bergen for Henley School.
Good evening. Tonight, I would like to honor our Teacher of the Year, Kayla Rodriguez. Kayla is a naturally gifted special education teacher. She demonstrates an insightful understanding of child development and has acquired a vast knowledge of instructional techniques and strategies while teaching students in kindergarten through fifth grade. Kayla has mastered the implementation of specialized and differentiated instruction while maintaining a learning environment in which each student celebrates their personal achievements and those of others. Kayla is able to meet the needs of a significantly diverse group of students due to her ability to use ongoing assessments combined with targeted individualized instruction. Kayla's students benefit from opportunities to use manipulatives, flexible seating options, engagement in movement, and a selection of a range of sensory tools provided in her small-group classrooms. For the past two years, Kayla has also been honing her skills as a part-time in-class support teacher in a fourth and fifth grade setting. She has demonstrated commitment towards establishing effective partnerships with her general education co-teachers and has embraced various roles to support all of the students participating in these settings. Kayla has researched and trialed effective modifications and accommodations that allow students with diverse needs to actively participate in class activities and achieve learning objectives. Some examples include use of alternative assessments, test formats, use of technology tools such as text-to-speech and dictation applications, and direct strategy instruction relative to study and organizational skill development. Kayla is a strong communicator and is a collaborative partner. She's a teacher who works closely with parents, teachers, support personnel, and administrators in an effort to meet the needs of her students. She has volunteered to pursue professional development related to effective teaching methods and curriculum, resources such as Orton-Gillingham and co-teaching models, student management and support training, and in the use of technology tools such as Learning Ally, Read and Write for Google Chrome, and the accessibility features on student Chromebooks. Kayla attends workshops, consults with the child's study team and related services providers on a regular basis, and then proceeds to explore and practice any suggestion she has given. Kayla's commitment to her students extends outside of the classroom as well. This year, she served as the co-director of the stage crew for the school play. She has established herself as an invaluable educational tutor, and her services have been in high demand since she began her tenure at Henley School. So we are so proud, Kayla, to have you at our Henley staff and to celebrate you as our Educator of the Year. I also have the pleasure to announce Henley School's educational professional this year, Christine Gilbert. Christine is someone who brightens up a room when she enters it, even at 7:00 a.m. for our before-care students. A parent who was fortunate enough to have Christine as her daughter's TA speaks highly of Christine and shared, and I quote, "They say it takes a big heart to shape little minds, and Miss Christine has the biggest heart. She genuinely goes over and above for every single student in her class." And this does hold true even when she's surrounded by students in before care. Christine's presence in the classroom makes a huge positive impact on the students. She takes the time to make everyone feel special. Kindergarten can be an intimidating time for a child, but around Christine, they find compassion, support, and genuine love. She is patient and resourceful in all her efforts to support the students. She recognizes when students are struggling, both academically and emotionally, while finding ways to support their learning. As a teacher assistant and a before-care counselor, Christine is diligent in her work. She complements the classroom teacher and proactively meets the needs of students throughout the day. The school day can be long and tiresome for TAs working with kindergarteners, but you would never know this when you see Christine leaving the building at the end of the day as she is as upbeat and smiling as she was at 7:00 a.m. We are so grateful to have Christine as a teacher assistant and before-care counselor at Henley School. She is so deserving of this honor. Congratulations, Christine.
And now, Mr. Beltrampa and Ms. Applebaum for the Valley Road School.
I have the honor of introducing our VRS Teacher of the Year, Chris Ragasseo. And I just want to tell you, he's our physical education teacher, because he will tell you he's not a gym teacher. Gym is a room. I'm a teacher. So to our physical education teacher. And he really lives those words, too. Chris Ragasseo has brought his expertise and his commitment to his students into our school and has totally reformed the PE program. Students experience well-thought-out and well-executed lesson, which ties together exercise, safety, fitness, collaboration, sportsmanship, and team building. He often does all those in one period. He adds music at times, which adds fun to the kids, as well as he reads stories about healthy living. It's pretty cool to see him reading his stories because he has this big chair. It's like a king's chair. He's sitting with his book, and all the young kiddies are around the bottom, so it's really special. He regularly communicates with parents. He shares informations with his colleagues on best practices for the students. And you'd be surprised, he comes up with so many best practices, even inside our classrooms that it's a position that he's not in. He's in PE, but he still comes up with a lot of good ideas. He looks for grants that can help and benefit our students. He puts in the time and effort to make every minute out of all his time with the students very useful. He works tirelessly in school, inside and out, to give the students at Valley Road a top-notch experience, and it clearly shows on each student's face when they leave his class every day. When one walks by the gym, they can hear sounds of students enjoying PE, and you can just feel the positive energy coming out of that room. Outside of school is no different. Chris is a resident of Clark with children of his own that participate in township activities. One time, I thought I was specially vented. I went to see the fifth-grade students that are on a football team playing football on a Sunday, and I hear this announcer. I said, "That voice sounds so familiar." I'm thinking and thinking, take out my phone, text Chris, "Where are you right now?" Like, I'm up in the announcer booth. So he was up there announcing the game, so that was pretty cool to hear him doing that. I found out that he goes to a lot of town sporting events to support the kids. You often hear him cheering on the students from the sidelines. He also attends many other Clark events like parades. Chris is often there at a parade, and he sometimes even participates in them. Teachers have often gone to Chris for help this year with students because he sees the students at the football game and the township events. He has always come through with support and help those students and those teachers. He's also become a mentor in our school. When he has a few extra minutes, he'll mentor one of our students having some difficulties, and he often makes a big difference in that child's life. And some of those kids are tough, right, Chris? Some of those kids are tough. He has also been in charge of things like Toys for Tots program, and I heard that he's done that for many years. I just found out about this year that he runs it, and he wants to help even more children that he doesn't even know. Aside from his teaching duties, parent duties, and as leader in many community efforts, he is the president of the Teachers Association. He supports every teacher and helps them out. He finds a way to keep teachers together and on the right path professionally. Along with this duty, Chris represents the staff in Clark at events like trunk or treat, family skate night, and other events that the Clark Rec Department puts on, so he's a very good community member as well. As a liaison with Mr. Grande and other administrators, he often helps make things better in the school and assumes sometimes in the district. All in all, Chris does just about everything he can to make things better. What more can we ask for than to make things better all the time? And he does it to the best of his ability. He's a teacher to look up to, a parent to want to emulate, and a great role model for our students. We are so proud and happy to have him as a teacher at Valley Road School, and Chris Ragasseo does make Valley Road School a special place.
This year, the recipient of the Educational Support Person of the Year at Valley Road School is Mrs. Maria De Silva. Mrs. De Silva is a paraprofessional in the LLD II self-contained classroom, where she works with students in grades three through five. Each day, Maria comes to work with a smile on her face, prepared to support and offer the learners in her class a positive experience. In her interactions with students, Mrs. De Silva is kind and patient and treats them like they are her own. Under her guidance, Mrs. De Silva's students make progress both behaviorally and academically. One parent explained that Maria took the time to share strategies she used with her son with the child's future power professional to best set him up for continued success. Mrs. De Silva's dedication to her students is evidenced by the way she continues to monitor how her former students are doing to ensure they remain on the right track. Maria always goes above and beyond in the classroom. At times, she spends her own money to buy her students activities and crafts that she knows they will enjoy using during their earned time. Maria always makes sure to acknowledge her students' hard work and accomplishments in and out of the classroom. Maria also helps plan amazing events for our students, and she is a great advocate for the special education population, always making sure they are included and recognized during school-wide events. Aside from her role in the classroom, Mrs. De Silva is very involved with the Clark community. She is a Girl Scout co-leader and started the Instructional Cheer Program at the Rec Center for students in grades K through two. The students enjoy seeing her around town at the different festivals, shows, and extracurricular activities. She is currently the vice president of the Valley Road School's PTA. As an integral part of the PTA Executive Board, she always volunteers her time to coordinate, plan, and lead many of the wonderful activities they sponsor. In general, Mrs. De Silva goes above and beyond for the students and staff at Valley Road School, and as such, she is so deserving of this honor. Congratulations.
And lastly, Ms. Viola for our Clark Preschool Annex.
Good evening, everyone. This is a long time coming, everyone. So congratulations to all the award winners. Tonight, it is both an honor and a privilege to present the Preschool Teacher of the Year award to Mrs. Erin Vandewoord, and Jeremiah is here to celebrate that. He's equally excited. So Erin is a dedicated, passionate, and talented educator. Patience truly is a virtue at the preschool, and Erin has an abundance of this skill in addition to creativity and just an overall love for her profession. I mean, she treats her children, her students, like they're her own. I mean, you could inherit eight more if you'd like to. I mean, proof that she's committed to her job, her email address is Clark Preschool. ClarkPreschool@ClarkSchools.org. Erin, can we say more? Lori, when we interviewed her, we knew right away that she was a star, and she has really shined. Thank you so much for all you do. We are lucky to entrust Erin with our preschool students, our precious preschoolers. Erin, thank you for all that you do. You're truly a pleasure to work with and most entertaining to watch in action in the classroom. If you have an opportunity, please go to the preschool and watch her. She's amazing. Erin, we love you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Viola, and congratulations to all of our Governor's Educators of the Year. Our next award is our Dan J. Administrative Assistant of the Year. This is a most prestigious award that the statewide group bestows on one administrative assistant to an athletic director in New Jersey each year. And I'd like to call forward Mr. Kalikas, our Athletic Director, to do the honoring. And I'd like to call forward Mr. Kalikas, our Athletic Director, to do the honoree.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy and Board of Education for putting together this wonderful evening, where we have a chance to honor some of our stellar, stellar educators throughout the district. And of course, congratulations to every recipient, teacher, and student at tonight's Board of Ed meeting. I am extremely happy to be introducing and speaking on behalf of colleague, coworker, and friend Geraldine Bonacorso. Geraldine has served the Clark School District for many, many years, and has served as the assistant to the Athletic Director since 2014. Geraldine is a loyal and hard-working employee of the Clark School District. She truly wants to see success for each and every administrator, teacher, coach, and student athlete that she assists. She goes above and beyond her duties by genuinely caring for all of our administrators, teachers, coaches, and especially our student athletes. In the past, Geraldine has been recognized at our Senior Athletic Awards for unselfish contributions to crusade or athletics, and she continues to work diligently for our student athletes, offering her services in whatever capacity needed, be it scheduling events, paying officials, assisting with our seasonal awards programs, dealing with parents, or just helping me keep my sanity. She is an invaluable asset to our athletic programs, and it would be impossible for me to do my job without her assistance. This year, all of Geraldine's hard work was finally recognized, as Geraldine was chosen by the Executive Board of the DAANJ and the Chairman of the Committee, Mr. Joe Pyro, as the Administrative Assistant of the Year for Central Jersey. Geraldine was honored at the DAANJ Award Ceremony on March 14th. This is a well-deserved honor that speaks of Geraldine's ability, personality, and dedication to the Clark School District and our entire athletic community. Behind any high-functioning athletic department stands an effective administrative assistant willing to do all the hard work that is needed for our student athletes. Geraldine works tireless hours for our student athletes and our athletic department, and all our students are lucky to have her as a dedicated employee, working for them behind the scenes.
Thank you, Mr. Kalikas. And now I'd like to call Mr. Delmonico back up, because several of our middle school Science Olympia participants placed at the state level, which is truly remarkable. Mr. Delmonico?
Have Mr. Peets come up, too, please? The KUMF Science Olympia team competed at the state finals on March 14th. To advance to the state finals, the team had to place high enough in the regional competition to be one of 27 teams in the finals, and they did. This is not an easy competition, as some of the schools are pure STEM schools that all they do is work on Science Olympia projects during the school day and beyond. Our students work at lunchtime, after school, and at home to be able to be competitive. I think they bother the parents for a lot of materials, if I'm not mistaken. They were looking at all kinds of things. The main advisors for our Science Olympia team are Mr. Surwedes, Mr. Peets, Mr. Rodriguez, and Ms. Lambert. These teachers also get support from our other science teachers and other staff in the building at all times. They give up their time free to help the students and bring in all kinds of equipment to help them. I think I saw somebody carrying a portable generator one day, right? Their generator to help them out. This year, our students did very well and received medals for placing in the state competition, and we are very proud of them. I'm going to call up the students, and Ms. Clark will give them the medals. In the tower competition, then placing in sixth place was Mia Lu and Sophia Kim. In the rollercoaster competition, third place went to Gabriel Kai and Lucas Elizondo. And we've been going to these competitions for a while at KUMF, and we've never had a team place this high. In the meteorology competition, in second place, and this is the first time any of our students have gotten this award, Gabriel Kai and Chiro Cutrone. They did a great job, and we're really proud of them. And five of them are sixth graders, so hopefully we'll hear some more about them in the next two years before we send them off to ALJ.
Thank you, Mr. Delmonico. And that concludes our Showcase of Success. Many congratulations to all of our honorees. You continue to make us proud each day, and you're a small sampling of the greatness that lies among our students and staff in the Clark Schools. We're going to ask for you to stay at the end of the meeting so we can get a group photo.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. So with that, I will promise to make this quick, so we all get out of here, and you guys can get your picture. So moving on, can I get approval of minutes from last month? I see Ms. Hickman and Ms. Akalonis. Questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Ms. Akalonis?
Yes.
Mr. Ben Savenga? Mr. Bohm?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Hickman?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Smorrow?
Yes.
And Mr. Dunkersloot?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Thank you. Moving on, we'll now open the floor to the public for agenda items only, so if there's anything on the agenda that you would like to address, now would be the time to address it. At the end of the meeting, there will be time for non-agenda items. All right, so seeing none on that, we'll move on to the next part of the meeting. Personnel, we have items one through eight. Can I get a motion? See, Ms. Hickman, uh, Ms. Harrison, followed by Ms. Hickman. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Akalonis?
Yes.
Mr. Ben Savenga?
Yes.
Mr. Bohm?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Hickman?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Smorrow?
Abstain.
And Mr. Dunkersloot?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Mr. Lewis?
Yes, I want to congratulate Barbara Corby for 26 excellent years in the Clark Schools. Congratulations on a job well done to Mrs. Corby. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to curriculum, we have item number nine. Can I get a motion? See, Ms. Akalonis, followed by Mr. Ben Savenga. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Akalonis?
Yes.
Mr. Ben Savenga?
Yes.
Mr. Bohm?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Hickman?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Smorrow?
Yes.
And Mr. Dunkersloot?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Thank you. And now we have Board Governance items 12 through 17. Can I get a motion? I'm sorry, Mr. Bohm, followed by Ms. Akalonis. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Akalonis?
Yes.
Mr. Ben Savenga?
Yes.
Mr. Bohm?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Hickman?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Smorrow?
Yes.
And Mr. Dunkersloot?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Thank you. And now we have Board Governance items 12 through 17. Can I get a motion? I'm sorry, Mr. Bohm, followed by Ms. Akalonis. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Akalonis?
Yes.
Mr. Ben Savenga?
Yes.
Mr. Bohm?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Hickman?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Smorrow?
Yes.
And Mr. Dunkersloot?
Abstain.
Motion carried?
Thank you. On finance, we have items 18 through 26, and we're going to administratively remove number 22. So item 18 to 26, and remove item 22. Mr. Smorrow, followed by Mr. Ben Savenga. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Akalonis?
Yes.
Mr. Ben Savenga?
Yes.
Mr. Bohm?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Hickman?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Smorrow?
Yes.
And Mr. Dunkersloot?
Uh, yes on all, and abstain on number 20.
20?
20, 2-0.
So noted. Uh, motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, we'll pass it to Mr. Grandy.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Dunkersloot. One final congratulations for this evening to our Educators of the Year, Mrs. Bonacorso, and our middle school scientists. As Mr. Lewis pointed out, this evening, we accepted the retirement of Barbara Corby, who is currently in Carl H. KUMF Social Studies Department. 26 years of great service to our schools and students. We approved our extended school year program, known as ESY, for our special-needs students to be held during the month of July. And Ms. Viola, thank you in advance for taking the lead with this project. Our college panel and fair was held today, and I'd like to thank the counseling team and Mr. Amendola for putting this together for our students and their families. And looking forward to tomorrow is our District Band Bonanza at 7:00 PM in the ALJ Lower Gymnasium. Mr. Caldero, his music teachers, and especially our student musicians have a great performance and show planned for us. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. Move on to the report of the committees. Seeing none, we'll move... Uh, Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, I just, I want to reinforce what Mr. Grandy said. I want to thank our Teacher of the Years, our support, help. This is what makes Clark great. The effort and the rigor that everybody puts into their job. Obviously, no one's going to come out being a millionaire, but you do impact students. And sometimes, you don't realize it until years later that you can reach and affect. I was in the preschool program, and it was very, very rewarding to see the effort, the expertise of what the support staff, as well as the teachers, did for those five- and six-year-olds. So it would be remiss if I didn't thank and congratulate everyone for what you do for the Clark Schools. On behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Any other reports to the committees? So seeing none. Any unfinished or new business? Seeing none, I hand it over to Abigail for the student update.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you. Beginning with Arthur L. Johnson High School, Women's History Month in March was celebrated with a series of four female speakers who are leaders in our communities. Students were able to go during both flex periods and heard about their experiences in the fields of politics, business, and more. This Monday, the fourth and final marking period began, and tonight was a post-secondary planning night, including a college panel and college fair put on by the Counseling Department. This Thursday, the Science National Honor Society will host their induction at ALJ to welcome new members and recognize graduating seniors. Spring sports have begun with boys' and girls' lacrosse and tennis, as well as baseball and softball. Beyond school-wide events, the seniors at ALJ are preparing for the end of their year, with the senior dinner taking place June 18th, prom on June 7th, and senior sunset and a senior picnic planned as well. Moving on to KUMF Middle School, NJSLA testing will be taking place from May 3rd to May 10th. The Unified Sports Team will participate in the Lincoln Tunnel 5K Challenge on May 5th, and information for how to participate or support the team can be found on the KUMF website. Finally, sixth-grade orientation for current fifth graders and their parents will take place on May 2nd at 6:30 PM. Finally, at Valley Road, March was a busy month. An author sponsored by the PTA visited for all students in kindergarten through fifth grade. The Read Across America event took place, and to celebrate, the VRS Book Fair was held, and a reading dance party took place at the end of the incentive program. Wellness Week also happened in March, which included various activities such as Zumba and obstacle courses. And coming up in April, Band Bonanza, which will be held in ALJ, where ALJ, KUMF, Valley, and Henley Bands will all perform, will be tomorrow night. Career Day is on April 18th, and for Earth Day on April 22nd, students and staff are encouraged to walk to school together. A variety show at Valley will be put on, taking place at 6:30 PM on April 22nd, and District-wide Take Your Child to Work Day will be on April 25th. That is all I have for this month. Thank you.
Thanks, Abigail. All right, so at this time, we will open the floor to the public. If there's anything that you'd like to discuss that was not on the agenda, now would be the time. Come to the podium, state your name and address, and you have three minutes per topic.
Bill Draghi, 47 Post Road, Clark, New Jersey. I would like to criticize Governor Murphy's law, which says that a child that wants to change their gender is secretive, and the teachers, if they find out about it, can help that child do that and change their gender, but they are not allowed to tell the parents. That is the law by Governor Murphy. A terrible law. The parents have to be told if their student, if their child has to take an aspirin, but if their child wants to change their gender and wants to keep it from their parents, the parents are not allowed to tell the parent, that the teachers that find out about it are not allowed to tell the parents that their child wants to change their gender. That is New Jersey's law, Governor Murphy's law. He's a terrible governor for making a law like that. He is also saying that the students must learn about abortion. I hate to hear what they're teaching in those classes, because abortion, to many people, and it is a terrible thing, and it does hurt a child if they are told to do certain things in case they get pregnant, say, to get rid of the child. I'm sure, I don't know what they say, but I'm afraid that, I'm sure, I'm sure I know what Governor Murphy wants to tell them, things like how to get to the abortion clinic and so forth, what pills to take, birth control pills. The Catholic Church only allows, and this is for all Catholics, only allows abortions for, by abstinence or by rhythm. So any Catholic parent should be very upset with the governor having the students be taught things about abortion. A terrible law, and I hope no one votes, well, it's already, it's already his last term, thank God. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else in the public that would like to have comments about non-agenda items? Okay, so seeing none, motion to adjourn. All in favor? All right. Thank you, everybody.